Hey, are you doing okay?
Yeah, I'm doing, I'm on my way, I'm on my way in. Hey, look, if Young isn't there, what we talk about-
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council meeting for May 21st, 2024. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and invite the members of the Hindu faith to the podium to offer our invocation. And if you would like to please all tell us which organization you are with and give us your names, please.
Namaste, my name is Sharvi Basavati.
Namaste, my name is Veera Bharadwaj.
Namaste.
Namaste, my name is Danvi Basavati.
Namaste, my name is Rishi Nayak.
Namaste, my name is Anyan Ayak. We are student volunteers from the Hindu Swamvayam Sevak Sangh. In the month of May, we all celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. In appreciation and sincere gratitude of the teaching community, we, the Hindu Swamvayam Sevak Sangh USA, celebrate Guru Vandana.
Guru Vandana is a Sanskrit word for teacher veneration. Today, we will be chanting the Guru Sotram to show our gratitude and mark of respect to all the wonderful teachers.
(Singing) Akhanda mandala karam, vyaptham yena chara charam, tat padham darshitam yena, tas may shri guruve namaha.
Salutations to that glorious guru who has shown me the reality of the pervasive, unbroken, infinite mandala of movable and immovable beings.
Agnana timi randa sya, nyananjana shalaka ya, chakshurun militam yena, tas may shri guruve namaha.
Salutations to that glorious guru who, when I was blinded by ignorance, applied medicine and opened my eyes.
Guru bramha guru vishnu, guru devo maheshvara ha, guru sakshat parat brahmha, tas may shri guruve namaha.
Guru is brahmha, guru is vishnu, guru is the supreme lord Shiva. Guru is both manifest reality and the absolute. Salutations to that glorious guru.
Guruve sarvaloka naam, bishajé bhavaro ginam, nidayé sarva vidya naam, dakhshinam urtayé namaha.
I bow to the universal god of South, the teacher of all worlds, the doctor of all diseases and ailments, and who is the storehouse of all knowledge. Dhanyavad.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. We appreciate you coming to our council meeting this evening and sharing that for our invocation. Next, we will have the pledge of allegiance led by council member Tilke.
Thank you, mayor. If you'll please rise and join me, I pledge allegiance.
Next, if I could have Deputy Clerk Martinez, please offer the roll call.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski. Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Torgeson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Councilmember Kaprowski will be joining us in a little bit. Our first proclamation will be to the American Legion members, I think it's actually auxiliary members, if they would come down to the front of the council chambers to declare May 24th, 2024 as Gilbert Poppy Day. I wear my red for Poppy Day. Okay. Whereas, America is the land of freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. And whereas, since the inception of our great nation, millions have answered the call to arms and undeniably many have fallen in battle and are known as fallen soldiers. And whereas, a nation, whether at peace or in wartime, must never forget the price of war and must honor the debt owed to those who died in war into their families. And whereas, the red poppy is universally designated as a symbol of the lives sacrificed in all wars. And whereas, annually, the American Legion Auxiliary pledges to remind Americans of these sacrifices and this debt owed through the distribution of this memorial flower. Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim May 24th, 2024 as Gilbert Poppy Day. And I encourage all residents to honor and pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll have you all introduce yourselves.
I'm Taryn.
Chris.
Wait, you're a junior auxiliary member?
Yes.
You want to say that?
Um, I'm a junior auxiliary member.
I'm Chris Brenna, and I'm an incoming E-Board member with the auxiliary.
Claudine Rossen, E-Board member.
And Mike Bailey, past commander, American Legion Gilbert Post 39.
Bridget Peterson, proud auxiliary member. Thank you all. Let's get a photo. Thank you all. I'll see you. See you Monday for Memorial Day. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is a proclamation declaring the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2024 as National Travel and Tourism Week. Councilmember Buckley will present to the Office of Economic Development. Please come down to the front of the chamber.
Hi there. Do you want to say something first?
All right, whereas the U.S. Travel Association and the national organization that represents and advocates for all components of the tourism industry. And whereas, travel is a pillar of economic growth supported by the Gilbert Office of Economic Development to enhance the quality of life for residents of Gilbert and visitors to Gilbert. And whereas, Gilbert is a premier leisure, sports, and business travel destination. And hashtag Gilbert is recognized by the Arizona Office of Tourism as Gilbert's official tourism marketing organization. And whereas, in 2022, tourism activity within Gilbert generated $357 million in visitor spending and in 2023 attracted 5.4 million visitors. And now therefore, I, Bobby Buckley, council member, on behalf of Bridget Peterson, mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim May 19th to the 25th, 2024 as National Travel and Tourism Week. And we encourage Gilbert employees and residents alike to support all tourism efforts that serve the best needs of our community. Thank you. Thank you very much for what you all do and-
Certainly. Thank you for the recognition. We appreciate that. We're going to do some introductions here in just a moment. But I'd like Glenn to talk a little bit about what tourism means in Gilbert.
Yeah, so tourism in Gilbert is all about supporting the community. It's about the things that we love here in the town and sharing those with visitors to the town. A lot of times, it's our friends and family who are coming to visit us, but also people from overseas, across the country. And for us, they come, they experience, they learn a lot, and they spend some money in our community, and that benefits us at the end of the day.
A couple of brief introductions. We'll start with Denise.
Denise Lopez, I'm the president and CEO of HD South, the Gilbert Historical Museum, and I also serve as a member of the Tourism Action Group.
Hi, I'm Liz Mangan. I am a tourism project manager, serving the tourism line of service within the Office of Economic Development.
Thank you. Dan Henderson, I serve as the Director for Economic Development. And in that, we support redevelopment, economic development, and tourism.
And Glenn Schlotman, Tourism Program Manager at the Town of Gilbert.
Thank you all. Hashtag discover Gilbert. Next, we'll move on to our public hearing portion of our agenda. Items will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing item may do so. I have slips for requests to speak on items seven, eight, and 12. Councilmembers, are there any other items that you would like to pull off to speak about or discuss individually?
Nine, please, ma'am.
Nine? Nine, please. Any other items? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on items three, four, five, six, 10, and 11. Close the public hearing. If anyone would like to make a motion on those items, I'd be happy to take one.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve items three, four, five, six, 10, and 11.
Thank you. I have a motion by council member Tilke. Seconded by council member Buckley. Because we have council member Torgeson virtually, we'll need to do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero, Judy. Thank you. Moving to item number seven, Code of Gilbert, conduct hearing and consider adoption of ordinance number 2901, amending the Code of Gilbert, Arizona by amending Chapter 42, offenses and abatement of public nuisance. Chris Payne, would you like to address this issue, please?
Yes, mayor council, would you? We had a study session on this last week or two weeks ago.
I need to open the public hearing, sorry. Open the public hearing on item seven. Now, Chris Payne. Thank you.
Okay. We had a study session on this ordinance and the next ordinance last, I guess it was two weeks ago. Would the council like a presentation on that? It's the same presentation or very similar to what was given? Or can we, or we can just do a discussion?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing no's, just the changes that we discussed, if you wanted to highlight those.
Okay. Sounds great. So what was discussed at the study session two weeks ago was an ordinance that would ban the possession and then lending or borrowing or selling brass knuckles or knuckles of metal to anyone under 18 years of age. That's the agenda, that's what's been published in the agenda, that's the ordinance. There's been a suggestion to modify that, to expand that prohibition, to include brass knuckles of any type of material, whether it's composite bone, whatever it is. It's all, all knuckles of any type for that purpose would be banned, no matter what the material is. So that's a change that you have on the dais right now that you can look at. It's the same ordinance that was discussed two weeks ago with a definition added at the end to say brass knuckles shall mean basically knuckles of any material type.
Any comments, questions on this? I do have public comment. I want to see if you had any questions for Chris at this point? No? Do you have a question or comment for Chris at this point?
Well, I just wanted to confirm from, you know, the meeting a couple of weeks ago. We decided on 18 and under, right? The 21 and under, how, how did that come out, or is that something we're talking about?
So mayor, councilmember Buckley, at the study session two weeks ago, the council decided on 18 and under, or under 18, I think is what it says. Let me verify. Any person under 18 years of age. That's what was published, and that's what we're discussing. Council could decide to go with a different age group. I would like to let council know that Chandler passed their ordinance last week, and they went with under 18. So ours would match what Chandler did.
I thought that was what, how we ended up. I just wanted to confirm that. Not, not what I wanted, but thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and invite the member of the public that would like to speak on item number seven, which is Connor Johnigan. Down to the public podium. Connor, you've spoken to us before, so I think you know how this works. Three minutes on the timer, Judy, please. Hi Connor, you're probably going to need to pull that mic up. You're pretty tall. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council members, for taking action in ordinance tonight. I will hopefully make it illegal for miners to possess brass knuckles or for businesses to sell them to miners in the town of Gilbert. As most of you may know, I was assaulted by a Gilbert goon in the back of the head with brass knuckles at the Gilbert In-N-Out on December 2022. This individual was 16 at the time, which is the same age that I was. I did not know him, but I do find it disturbing that he could have easily purchased brass knuckles anywhere in the East Valley, since we currently have no regulations on them whatsoever. Brass knuckles are dangerous weapons designed with the single purpose in mind to inflict maximum harm upon another human being. Unlike many other weapons, brass knuckles are specifically engineered to enhance the force of a punch, turning a relatively harmless blow into a potential lethal weapon. I know this because doctors told me, had my injury been an inch over, I could have been paralyzed or killed. Like many Arizonans, I am proud of our freedoms and individual rights, so it may seem counterintuitive for me to advocate for the banning of any object. Based on my personal experience, I believe there are certain items whose sole purpose is to cause harm and whose presence in our society serves no legitimate purpose. Brass knuckles fall squarely into this category. We cannot allow individuals, and in this case that you are voting on tonight, specifically miners under 18, to possess tools whose only use is to inflict pain and suffering among others. I personally believe in a complete ban, but I can understand other viewpoints, although I do not buy the argument that they are used for self-defense. By taking decisive action tonight to ban juveniles from possessing brass knuckles and to ban the sale of them to miners, the Gilbert Town Council will send a powerful message that teen violence has no place in our community. This ordinance shows that Gilbert is attempting to make a positive difference in our community. We will solve teen, will we solve teen violence? No, I'm not that naive to believe that we will. But if it prevents another disturbed teen from accessing a deadly weapon and possibly preventing what happened to me to someone else, then it will be worth it. In closing, I'd like to say thank you, council- In closing, I'd like to say thank you, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, for your support and willingness to listen to my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Please refrain from applause. Thank you, Connor. We appreciate you coming and speaking this evening to the Town Council. I don't have any other people wishing to speak on this item, so I will bring this discussion back to the council. Any comments, thoughts, questions? Discussion? Councilmember, Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm supportive of the changes before us this evening. I think that Councilmember Bon Giovanni probably wants to make the motion, so I don't want to jump ahead of that.
Thank you. No pressure. Councilmember Bon Giovanni, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm, let me think here. I'm real proud of Connor. You've been really brave to move forward with this. I wasn't going to miss this for the world. I was discharged from ER about thirty minutes ago, and the doctor said, as long as I don't get angry or upset, he will let me come here today. So I'm asking the council to save a councilman's life and make sure this thing gets passed. I, it's been, it's been a long haul, but when I heard your story, Connor, I knew that something had to get done. And I want to thank the council for listening to you also and making this, hopefully, a possibility and, and a new organs tonight.
I will go ahead and close the public hearing and challenge Councilmember Bon Giovanni to make a motion on this item. As long as that fits within your health requirements for the evening.
It does. So I'm going to master this soon, but right now, I make a motion to pass item seven, Code of Gilbert, Chapter Forty-two, Offensive and Abatement of Public Nuisance, Article Four, Offensive Including Public Safety Relating to Brass Knuckles.
I second that motion.
As presented this evening by Chris Payne.
As presented by Chris Payne.
Perfect. That will, that will include the changes.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I heard our voice from the sky. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, I do have one, one person wishing to speak. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on Code of Gilbert, Conduct Hearing and Consider Adoption of Ordinance Twenty-Nine-Oh-Two, Amending the Code of Gilbert, Arizona by Amending Chapter Forty-two, Offenses and Abatement of Public Nuisance, Article Three, Offenses Involving Public Peace and Order, Division Three, Related to Unruly Gatherings. And throw it to Chris Payne for introduction of this item. Chris?
Mayor and council, as we had the study session on this a couple of weeks ago, I'll just go over briefly what this ordinance would do. Gilbert has historically not had an ordinance like this in place. A lot of other cities have, Gilbert has not. So what this would do, it would make it illegal to have an unruly gathering within the town, whether on private property or public property, whether it's residential or commercial. And that, the way it's defined, it's a party gathering event or any, on any property, which causes a disturbance of the reasonable enjoyment or of the property by any persons. And that's, that's the main point. And what it does is it holds, it identifies the responsible person, and under the code change, the responsible person would be any person who's the owner, landlord, or tenant, or the sponsor or host of that unruly gathering. So this is a, a large party that gets out of hand that's disturbing the peace. The person that threw the party or the property owner, landlord, tenant, could be held responsible under this. Currently, if there's a large party like this, police go out. If there's underage drinking, they could cite that, but they can't hold the homeowner or the person that threw, threw the party responsible. The exception for the responsible person is if, if you're the property owner or the tenant and you didn't know about it, then you're not going to be liable under this. So if you're, you're the homeowner and you didn't know about the party happening, you may be able to get out of it. That's a defense that you would have if you're cited, except that if there's a second unruly gathering at that same property within a hundred and eighty days, then you're on the hook. And the idea is you can't just say, hey, I'm an absentee owner, I don't know about this, and escape liability. If you knew a party happened, then you got to make sure it doesn't ever happen again, or else you're going to be responsible directly. So the penalties, as written, would include, a first citation would be a fine of not less than five hundred dollars, it's a civil fine, and not more than twenty-five hundred dollars. The judge or the court would make that determination where that should fall in, in that range. And then a second violation after, a second violation within an eighteen-month period would be a criminal violation, a class-one misdemeanor. And the other, for, for penalties as well, the other component that, that's there is that the responsible person would also be liable, besides whether it's a civil or criminal fine, for the actual cost of the town and responding to that. So if you have a large unruly gathering, a large party that happens, and police and fire have to roll out, the responsible person would get a bill for the actual cost of, you know, what it took for the town to respond to that event.
On top of anything that the court imposes?
On top of the civil fine or the criminal fine, whatever, whatever ends up out of that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Chris at this point? Councilmember Buckley?
I seem to have a lot of questions tonight, but Chris, I, I just would, can you clarify at the beginning, when you started talking, you specified the different sections or people or areas that this applies to? Did you say "commercial" in there? I thought I heard you say residential, commercial.
So that, that's correct. The, the idea is it doesn't just apply to residential properties. If there's an unruly gathering on a commercial property, then that commercial property owner or whoever threw that party would be held liable under this, would be held responsible under this ordinance.
Okay. So if, if one of the local restaurants or resorts maybe, as we have them in Gilbert, maybe Doubletree, but if they were to have a New Year's Eve party, those, anybody could say a New Year's Eve party is unruly sometimes, just because, you know, of the circumstances. Would, would they get fined for this? I mean, it does, that's why I'm concerned that "commercial" is in there.
So, and I, I think I'm going to defer to Chief to come up on the discretion side. The answer is, if the behavior rises to the level of an unruly gathering where it's disturbing the peace and the reasonable enjoyment of the neighbors, then yes, potentially, but our police officers also have discretion and know when to use it, and Chief can speak on that better.
Yes. Mayor and Councilmember Buckley, as Chris mentioned, we would have to take the totality of the circumstances. This ordinance provides several examples of different items we can look for to identify as an unruly gathering. So if your example at a hotel, a New Year's Eve party, and that gets very loud, we have to look at traffic flow, pedestrian flow, is there underage drinking, illegal drug use? These are all factors that we would take into consideration to determine, is that party an unruly gathering? And keep in mind also, we have the state statutes as well. So if you have a commercial property that's, let's say you have a thousand people there, we may also have disorderly conduct as well. So that is another option, in addition, whether it's residential or commercial. But just the fact that you have a large party, we have to take into consideration of the noise, the containment of that noise, reasonable precautions, normal business, we get noise downtown heritage with our businesses, that's reasonable and expected, but at times, if it gets too high, we can have that conversation on bringing that noise level down. We also have our noise ordinances as well. So it's not a blanket, if there's a party and the police get called, you're going to get cited. We have to go through all these steps to document how and why it's unruly.
Okay. So, so there are some stipulations with "commercial" already?
Yeah, yeah, as, as Mayor and Councilmember Buckley, the same with residential as commercial, the same law, whether it's state or ordinance, would, would apply to both equally.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Our burden of proof is the same.
Okay. Perfect. I just, I just wanted to clarify that, so that we don't have our businesses all over us, but they already have, most of those anyway, the restrictions. Okay. I got it.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
I just wanted to note it, I wanted to thank Chris Payne for working with the Chandler attorney hard to get this language through, and also to the Chandler Town Council to bring this issue to light, for us to move forward with it here in Gilbert. And I hope other cities join both the brass knuckles and this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. Chris, I have a little bit of problem with my computer, so I can't pull up the actual packet at this point for the, well, I can, but it's blurry. So I don't know what's going on, but the, so I don't have the, the final that was in our packet. I thought we talked about eighteen months, not a hundred and eighty days, so that's what I was confused about.
We had, but then Chris explained it to us in a different way, and we went back to the hundred and eighty days, correct?
Yes, there's actually, there's two components, just to clarify. There's, there is an eighteen months, and there is a hundred and eighty days. So the, the change that we discussed at the, at the study session was, if you're a responsible person who is a landlord or an owner or a tenant, they're not, you know, if an unruly gathering happens at their property, they're not responsible under the code unless they knew about it.
Yeah.
Or unless there had been one within a hundred and eighty days prior to that current one.
Okay.
So that's what the code says. The eighteen months comes in on the criminal side, on the penalty side, so if there has been an unruly gathering and someone was cited for that, and they get cited a second time within eighteen months, then that jumps it from, that second citation is no longer civil, it's going to be criminal.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I agree with.
And we had talked about making, I think, talked about making them both the same, but then we realized that you actually have to be well behaved for a longer period of time.
Right. That's what I had thought.
The nicest way to put it, probably.
So I apologize. I thought I was going to have it pulled up, so I didn't have any other questions. I think that you covered the changes that we had all discussed. It sounds like it's in pretty close to Chandler's. I think the only difference is the responsible party, which I think is more enforceable on ours, and so that minor change there is something they'll have to deal with. But I think overall, we're very close and similar, which is what we were hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, yes, Councilmember Torgerson?
My question here is, when, if the court does not find it to be, like, someone to be liable, but we've had this where we've attempted to bill them, I'm assuming that, that the ability to put the costs of police to a, to a landowner, to a homeowner, would be unable, be unable to be enforced because they've not been found criminally negligent? Is that correct?
Councilmember Torgerson, that's correct. That the provision that talks about being reliable or being responsible for the expenses comes after a person commits a violation is found responsible. So only after a court conviction.
And that would be on the criminal, not on the civil end of it, correct?
It's, it's both on the civil or the criminal. So if you get cited and you either plead guilty or accept the penalty, or a court finds that you're civilly responsible, you would also be liable for the expenses, same thing on the criminal side.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Torgerson. I'll go ahead and bring our speaker up, Anne Dusset. If you'll come up to the public podium, please. Judy, can we have three minutes on the clock?
Hi, my name is Anne Dusset. I'm speaking on behalf of the Lord family. An upstanding young man named Preston Lord had just turned sixteen years old when he was murdered as a result of teen violence at a house party that was out of control. It is time that stricter laws are created to hold teenagers and adults accountable and responsible for their actions. Chandler City Council has stepped up as a leader in the East Valley to create the unruly gathering, ordinance. We ask that you follow suit in creating a unified commitment to join the City of Chandler in this ordinance. This amended ordinance will make the residents of Gilbert feel safer. We live in a time where the prevalence of underage drinking and out-of-control parties among minors has become a troubling norm. These events not only endanger the lives of our young citizens, but also disrupt the peace and harmony of our neighborhoods. It is imperative that we take decisive action to address this issue. The amended law will enforce stricter consequences for minors caught drinking and hosting unruly parties. By holding these individuals accountable for their actions, we aim to deter such behavior in the future and protect, protect the safety of our communities. Moreover, this law extends its reach to the parents who must take responsibility for the actions of their children under their care. It is a collective effort to ensure that our youth grow up in an environment that fosters responsibility and respect for the law. The unruly gathering, gathering ordinance would serve to strengthen existing laws and reinforce these values. In conclusion, let us stand united in support of the amended law to enforce accountability amongst minors and their parents. Together, we create a safer and more nurturing environment for our youth to thrive. The Lord family would like to thank the City of Chandler City Council for partnering with the community to make this, these necessary changes quickly and efficiently. Let us also take a moment to reflect on the remarkable life of Preston Lord, whose memory will forever be cherished in our hearts. Thank you. The Lord family.
Thank you. Bring the discussion back to the dais. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any more comments, discussion, questions? Vice Mayor?
I'm ready to make a motion.
I would love to have a motion.
I would move approval of item number eight, an amendment to Chapter Forty-two, offenses and abatement of public nuisance, Article Three, offenses involving public peace and order, Division Three, related to unruly gatherings.
I'll second that.
As presented this evening? I have a motion by Vice Mayor Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. And thank you, Chris Payne, and again to the City of Chandler and the City Council of Chandler and their, their city attorney, Kelly Schwab, who was my town attorney here in Gilbert when I first started volunteering. Thank you for the work on this. We appreciate that. Moving on to item nine, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Councilmember Torgerson, you requested that item nine be pulled. Do you need a presentation, or do you have specific questions for staff?
Well, specifically, I want to know the Community Development Block grant reporting back to HUD. I want to confirm the reporting requirements and expectations of such.
Okay. I think I heard you would like to know what the reporting requirements and expectations are with the CDBG grants.
Yes, because they're reporting back to HUD, yeah.
Thank you. Melanie?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, the reporting requirements are developed where, after we complete the annual action plan, is if it is adopted this evening, we move forward and submit that to HUD, who then reviews and makes sure we are in compliance with what we're looking to move forward with. And then at the completion of every year, we actually create what's called the CAPER, and it's an actual evaluation of all of the accomplishments and what we did and how we spent the money. We do provide that report to council as well, but it's submitted also through HUD. It gets actually promoted to the public, there's public comment available, and we have that as our requirements to make sure we have met the expectations and that we have spent the money in accordance with all of the regulations.
Councilmember Torgerson, any comments or questions on that?
Or any further requirements of doing this? And it's, it's the typical thing of, do we have any other ongoing expenses with it? Are we engaged in any other federal programs by taking this money? Anything, you know, the strings attached explanation?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, you are required to make sure that you meet one of the national objectives when you set out in spending these funds and making sure that you are either benefiting lower or moderate income persons, it does have to either aid in the elimination of slum and blight, or meeting a particular... It does have to either aid in the elimination of slum and blight or meeting a particular urgency. Our annual action plan outlines very specifically how we will be utilizing those funds. You can use some of it, you can use a percentage toward administration. So we do use some of our funds to help pay for a staff member that runs our emergency minor home repair program, which that program does help townwide with emergency repairs for someone who is income eligible, so that's meeting the low income benefit qualifications. So all of our projects do have to meet that minimum expectation as required, but we're not tied into any other federal programs, federal funds. Again, these are very specific requirements that are identified through the CDBG allocation that we do receive as a community that's over 50,000. It is a formula allocation that we receive these funds.
I appreciate you going through the explanation for the nth time for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The nth time, is that what I heard? Thank you, Councilmember Torgerson. Any other questions or comments on this item? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Would someone like to make a motion on item number nine?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
I move to...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Torgerson.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt a public hearing, item number nine, Community Development Block Grant Funds for FY 2024 to 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Tilke. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 12, elections, conduct a hearing on the Capital Projects Accumulation Fund option on the November 5th, 2024, general election. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Do we have a staff member that could... Oh, Kelly Fost, I see you, that would just give a general overview of this item before I bring up our public speaker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll get, I've got just a couple slides, because it's a detailed topic, so I think that will help provide clarification.
All right, perfect. The public hearing tonight is related to the state imposed expenditure limit. We anticipate there will be two questions on the November 2024 ballot for voters. They are related to this expenditure limit. One of them is a permanent base adjustment, which permanently changes the number that the state imposes on the town. The second item is a capital projects accumulation fund. It allows for capital, money that the town spends on capital projects to be exempt from that state limit. Voters can approve both of these items, it's not an either or option. A little bit more information about what the state expenditure limit is. In the Arizona constitution, it includes from the 70s is when this was put into place. And it said whatever the cities or towns spent for their budget in 1980, that was a wonderful year, and that's the total amount that the cities and towns are allowed to spend moving forward, inflated for population growth and then inflation in the market. It does not change, that number does not change based on changes of services that the town has over time. The town of Gilbert voters did approve a permanent base adjustment, so it changed this number, which started in fiscal 1998, so it's about 25-ish years old now. And voters are allowed to make those adjustments. So Gilbert has changed significantly since 1998, when that last change was made. New fire stations, expanded two water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plant, multiple public safety buildings, pools, libraries, parks, lots of services in Gilbert have changed since that time. The permanent base adjustment, as I mentioned, would permanently change the number, the base that it is calculated off of. It is not a tax increase. It does not change any of the revenues that Gilbert would get. It simply changes the number that the state has for us, that's the maximum we're allowed to spend in a year. The chart on the slide here shows you what the per capita expenditure limit is for the various cities in the valley. Gilbert currently, the per capita amount, since all of the cities have different numbers of population, this helps make it more comparable. Gilbert's currently under $2,000 per resident that we're allowed to spend. If the permanent base adjustment was put into place, it would increase to about $3,200 per resident. It would be second lowest in the valley, so still a very conservative number. Glendale would be just above Glendale. Scottsdale is also asking for a permanent base adjustment on their ballot this year. The Capital Projects Accumulation Fund allows money that the town spends for capital projects to not count against the expenditure limit. If, other things that don't count against the expenditure limit is if the town bonds for projects. So we can cash fund the projects, it counts against the expenditure limit if we bond, it does not. This exemption would allow the town to bond, to cash fund more projects instead of bonding for them, and still be with, under the expenditure limit, is the value of this. The penalty, if the town goes over the expenditure limit, is that the state is able to withhold our state shared income tax revenues, various amounts depending on the amount over. And then they would divide up those revenues they withheld from Gilbert to all of the other cities and towns, not including Gilbert. The total penalty could be a maximum of $60 million per year for every year that the town would be over. So it is a large penalty there. On the May 7th meeting, council did approve a resolution that allows the permanent base adjustment to go on to the ballot in, on November, the November ballot. The Capital Projects Accumulation Fund, that exemption, has a different process in statute for how that would get to the ballot. It requires two public hearings. Tonight is the first of those public hearings. The second public hearing will be the June 4th meeting, at which point council can make a vote on whether or not to include this item for voters to vote on in November. We will be doing extensive public outreach, because this is kind of a not well-known part of state statute, so that voters can make an educated decision. We do anticipate that the ballot will be three or more pages long, so we encourage voters, get all the way to the bottom and make sure to express your thoughts and opinions on those important town items, which are usually towards the bottom of the ballot. Any questions?
Thank you, Kelly. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Okay, I have two. In no way, shape, or form, because should this be called a debt ceiling? Am I correct?
Correct, it is a total expenditure limit ceiling. In fact, debt is exempt from...
It's not even close to a debt ceiling, correct?
No.
So if we see that on social media, we need to remember that this is not a debt ceiling, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Second question. Let me see if I can understand this right. Pretend I'm 10 years old. I said pretend. I have $100 of cash in my pocket. I want to buy an $80 watch, but my parents, or the state, says you can only spend $50 in cash. So if I want to buy that watch, I'd have to take a loan out for $30, which would kind of like be a bond, correct?
Correct.
So even though I have the cash to pay for it, the state can tell me that I can't pay cash for it, and voting correctly on this would raise that, so I could pay cash for it, correct?
Your analogy is correct. I can't influence an election, so I...
Okay.
There is no voting correctly. Vote how you would like, but the analogy is correct.
Okay, thank you for not influencing the record.
She has to be careful how she responds.
I got it. Okay, I want to make sure I'm 10 years old, and I fully understood that. So if I go on social media tomorrow, I'm still 10 years old, and I get this, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Councilmember, you can influence an election. Staff members cannot influence an election.
You better believe it, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment at this point, or a question for Kelly? Oh, yes, Councilmember Torgerson.
And I'm kind of reiterating what Chuck just stated, but for instance, Chandler, I think, paid cash for their town hall, correct?
Yes, Patrick is shaking his head, yes, that's true.
Yes, that's my understanding.
So, yeah, as I recall, they paid cash rather than having to bond for it. So in essence, it's allowing us, let's say more revenue came in, with some sort of state shared revenue, sales tax, whatever, we wouldn't be subject to going over that limit, and we wouldn't have to borrow and pay interest against money that we're sitting on. If we sold properties, whatever, we wouldn't be penalized, and in the end, it would cost us less. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, yes, that idea is correct. There would still be a limit that we couldn't go over, but it would be higher, so we would be less likely to exceed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Torgerson. Thank you, Kelly, for the explanation. I will go ahead and invite Dora Lys Machado-Liddell to the podium to speak to us this evening. Judy, three minutes on the clock, please. And I can see it up here, Judy, I know that, I can see it up here. Hi, Dora Lys, turn the microphone on, one of those two buttons, and I am sorry, I forget which one it is. There you go, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dora Lys Machado-Liddell. I was just going to comment on the proposal for the election. I think I missed some of the comments, but my one question is, how much is this costing to place the ballot, or place this on the election ballot? How much would it cost the taxpayers of Gilbert? That's my one question. And if there is a cost, I think we should know that. Also, I think that spending, and I understand spending, we need to spend, and paying cash is great, but I've seen it time and time again, where the town of Gilbert has allowed developers to postpone their development agreements, because the cost of building is so high. So I think sometimes, as a town, we may look at things like that and may postpone projects that not are infrastructure, that are not necessary, roads, traffic, fire, things like that. But we need to look at things and look at our budget, rather than going to the people. And I know that it says it's not a tax increase, I understand that. However, we can't spend more money than we're bringing in, and eventually, we're going to run out, and we're going to have to ask the taxpayers to pay that. So I just ask that we consider that, and that we be, we are fiscally conservative also. And I understand cash is great, and cash is king, but the cash has to come from somewhere. So I ask you to consider that, and then also, if you haven't discussed the cost to the taxpayers, I would appreciate if that was addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dora Lys. Is there anybody that can answer the question about putting on the ballot? I know that this is a regular election year, and the ballot's already being printed, and this is part of a regular election. Typically, we don't have to pay extra for that, because there's already an election going on. But that's just spitballing.
Mayor Peterson, you are correct. I don't have the exact cost, and it would include publicity pamphlets and things like that, but you are correct in that it is part of a regular election, so the costs are more nominal at that time.
We're not trying to run a special election on this. It's part of the regular general election that's going to be run. Kelly even referenced the fact that the ballot's probably going to be about three pages long, so everybody needs to pay attention all the way down their ballot, as we're hearing there's going to be so many issues on the ballot and elections on the ballot, that it's going to be a very long ballot.
That is correct.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for any discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Torgerson?
I just wanted to confirm with Kelly, on these expenditures, we're not allowed to spend money we don't have if we're spending cash, correct?
We'll reopen the public hearing, Kelly. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, thank you. That is correct. We are still required to maintain a balanced budget. We still cannot spend money that we do not have. This just changes the number from the 1980s that the town has, or that the state has for us.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Kelly at this time? Councilmember Karpaskey, yes, I don't think we need a vote on this tonight, it's just...
Correct, this is the first public hearing, the vote will be June 4th.
I got excited. All right, thank you. Kelly, in response to the question from Dora Lys, who made the comment, could you talk a little bit about some of the upcoming CIP projects and how they would be funded? I believe they're funded through repair and replacement funds, and that, in my mind, is like a savings account, that we've been holding that money in for this time period when those repairs need to be done. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. There are a lot of CIP projects coming up, you're correct. One of the funding sources that we use is money we have set aside for repair and replacement projects. We have the cash in the bank account, there is now a need to do those projects, whether they're water pipes, wastewater pipes, building maintenance and repair. All of our funds have these types of things. If we go over the expenditure limit or get too close, then we can't use that cash for those purposes that were planned, which could change town operations.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Again, I'm 10 years old. So this will actually save taxpayers interest on bonds that we really don't need if we can pay cash.
Yes, that, it will give more opportunity for council to make those decisions about bonding or cash, rather than having to bond to stay under the expenditure limit.
Awesome, thank you.
Because essentially, we get penalized for doing one versus the other. Under, mhm, yes. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Torgerson, you good?
Well, I'm never good, but I'm okay with this.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais if someone liked to attempt a motion. Oh, sorry, we don't need a motion. Never mind, ixnay on the motion, sorry. Again, I got excited. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, I will recess the regular meeting and convene into a special meeting to discuss the budget and the acceptance of the preliminary budget for July, possible acceptance of the preliminary budget for July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, of $2,344,218,800, and establish June 4th, 2024, as the date of the public hearing and adoption of the final budget. Inviting Kelly Fost, oh, she's already back at the podium, to the podium.
You get me back to back.
Back to back.
All right, we'll do just a quick presentation, and we've talked about this item several times, so you're very familiar with it. But we are here tonight to talk about the preliminary budget adoption. Gilbert has won a lot of accolades, continues to, best city for early retirement, second fastest growing city in the US, third healthiest mid-site employer in Arizona. Lots of good things are happening in the town. This year, we also, or every year, we do zero-based budgeting. This year was another tough year. We typically zero-based removes money from the budget. We right-size it to the amount of money that's needed to continue to provide the services that have been authorized for the department. But because inflation has been so high, those services have increased in cost, and so several of the departments had to add money to do the same thing that they have been doing. You'll notice solid waste in the middle on the bottom is our largest. It had to add about $2 million to their budget because of increased fuel costs and increased tipping fees or landfill, the cost to take things to the landfill. Same services, just higher cost for those departments. But we continue to work and want to maintain that responsibility for the zero-based budgeting. Our budget process is a long process. It goes all years, kicks off in September. We do budget input from the different departments, based on information from the departments get all year long, information from citizens, or master planning efforts, different things that we do. Executive team deliberates. We have a financial retreat, where council's able to give input on a lot of financial topics that help us move forward and give direction through the year. Town manager's office reviews the budget as well. There's a council study session, which was held in May, and then tonight, we're at preliminary adoption. Final adoption is the last step. In Arizona, there is a rule that the tentative or preliminary budget, once it's been adopted, that number cannot increase. The number that is adopted tonight will be the maximum that we can spend for the year, and the final budget can be lower, but it cannot be higher than what's adopted tonight. In the recommended budget, there's 46 positions across the various areas in the town, and in your packets, you received information earlier about all of those positions and the business case need for each of them. The largest part of the budget is the capital projects, investment in the infrastructure of the community. It's about $1.6 billion across these different areas, the largest being the street improvements and the water improvements, are the areas of investment right now. If we look at the carry forward versus new for the capital improvement projects, about $1.1 billion are projects that we are currently working on, that we will continue to work on and carry forward into next year. Most of these projects take more than one year to complete. And then there's about $430 million of the new projects that will be added into the queue to work on in the upcoming year. If we look at last year's adopted, or current year's adopted budget, it's just over $2 billion. The proposed budget for fiscal '25 is about $2.3 billion. The biggest difference there is that $224 million more for the capital projects, the net difference from last year to this year. There were some changes that were requested at study session, and you'll notice that the total budget number is the same as what you've seen before, and that's because the nonprofit funding was increased by $70,000 to make a total of $500,000 at council's direction. The employee development in the council budget was reduced by about $25,000, leaving $3,000 per council member and $6,000 per mayor, which is an increase over what our base budget is, but less than what was originally proposed. There was a placeholder for potential recruitment and retention programs. It was reduced by $45,000 in order to balance... It was reduced by $45,000 in order to balance everything, which is why the total number that you see is the same as what you saw before. It was a movement of money within the budget. For property tax, the proposed levy is $33,275,000. This is what we would need in order to meet our principal and interest payments for the upcoming year. There are some refunds that the county will be providing, so we will be getting about $1.5 million less than this after they make the refunds. That is more refund than we were anticipating, so we will have to dip into our reserves in order to make all of the payments that are needed next year. But there are sufficient reserves to be able to do that. We anticipate, and it does maintain, the 98 cent rate that we've had for the last, for last year and this year, would maintain that even rate for the taxpayers. The milestones, we had the budget study session and the levy property tax hearing on May 7th. Tonight, we have preliminary budget adoption and the first reading of the CIP. And then June 4th is final budget adoption, final CIP adoption, and final tax levy adoption coming up. Any questions?
Thanks, Kelly. Any questions or comments for Kelly at this time? Councilmember Banjivani.
Kelly, I know the number can't be moved, can't be changed after tonight's adoption, correct? Can't go up.
You can't go up.
Okay, okay. So between now and the next meeting, can it go down or can it move around at all for any last-second changes?
Down is the only movement it can do.
It can stay the same.
It can stay the same.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments for Kelly?
Mayor?
Councilmember Torgerson.
Hey, Kelly, so are you saying that if I looked at a line item, let's say digital government, which is of course my favorite thing, and I looked at it being $1,521,023 and $2,100,000 for 2025, are you saying that we wouldn't be able to move that $450,000 to $500,000 to a different department between now and then?
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, council can make requests to have changes in the budget. We would, whatever number is adopted tonight, we can't do anything that would make the budget higher for final adoption.
Okay, but would I be able to say, take $250,000 to Fire, make their budget $250,000 larger while making digital government's budget $250,000 less?
That instruction could be given. Technically, the council adopts the money at the fund level, but as staff, we definitely would listen to the instruction of council if there were changes that you wanted made. Patrick has some...
I wish to propose to take the increase and split it evenly between police and Fire, which I think police and Fire are much more germane to the health and wellness of our community. That wouldn't be impossible to do either tonight or in our next meeting, would it?
Councilmember Torgerson, what, what the number is that I read as I opened this topic, that's the number that can't change. That's the total number of the budget, so that can't increase after the vote tonight once the preliminary budget is passed. It can decrease after tonight. Movement around within the budget is subject between council and discussion with our town manager because technically, we set the limit of the budget and the town manager handles how that budget is specifically dispersed within the town.
Right, I'm just confirming that doesn't, that there's no, there's no reason we can't increase the budget of one department while decreasing the budget of another, keeping it at net zero.
Very true. That's accurate.
With council...
With council support, you'd have to, you'd have to have consensus of a majority of the council with a discussion with your town manager because really technically, our lane is the overall budget and health and wellness fiscally set forth by this council under the policies that we've made where the town manager runs the everyday business of the community.
Well, I'm very well aware of that. I'm just thinking it's much more in the interest of the health and welfare of our community to fund our police and Fire more, more robustly.
Yes, thank you.
And then also, I'm just...
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Torgerson.
No, I'm also just curious, and this isn't, I'm not trying to, to nitpick anything. I just, I would love to understand the increase actually in the mayor and council general fund budget. It's, it's page two, was it, 227 of the packet? I think it's page one of the expenses summary. And that had gone up approximately $316,000. I'm just curious, over the last few years, how that's grown? Since we don't see it in pay, where is the extra $316,000 going?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson. I don't have that number right in front of me. I can look it up and provide an explanation back to you, but I'm not prepared at the moment to provide that.
Okay, I would really appreciate having an explanation. I'm just looking at 2022 to pretty, on budget 2025, and it's, it's quite a leap for something that maybe I'm missing something, but it certainly isn't, $316,000 certainly isn't going to anybody on mayor and council. And the first person, the average person's going to point at is me and six other people thinking that we're padding our pockets for $316,000. I just, I just need an explanation to defend myself in there.
I know there are additional things that are paid out of the mayor and council budget memberships and different things that would have had increases over that time because there hasn't been significant salary increases over that time. There have been some additional people coming into the council budget. There was the addition of...
Taylor, Taylor's position.
Taylor and council aide, I think there used to be just the mayor's aide. So there are some changes like that that have happened, but I would need a minute to look into, to the in-depth detail, not just off the top of my head for you.
Yeah, Councilmember Torgerson, yeah, sorry, Councilmember Torgerson, that budget, you have to remember encompasses the staff that supports mayor and council. It encompasses the cell phones, the, all of the technical equipment that we have. It's going to encompass all of that, including meals that we have for meetings and memberships like Kelly mentioned. So it encompasses a lot more than just what you see every day.
I know. I'm extremely aware of that. My point is, it's just I need to be able to explain that because I think the average person can look at that and go, wow. I mean, that could be two people and their, the costs of healthcare and co-payments and taxes, you know, all the things that come along with hiring somebody to assist us. For instance, you know, as you had stated earlier, we'd like a little bit more, a little bit more power over some messaging and some community contact, and maybe that's the cost of it. I just would really like to know what that cost is because certainly, it's not, when people say salaries, it's not your salary or our salary. So I would like to see just what it is so I can defend that in an appropriate manner.
Kelly would be happy to get you that information. Yes, I will. Vice Mayor Anderson.
A question for Councilmember Torgerson. Are you talking about, when you mentioned about digital government and police and Fire, are you talking about moving funds around and/or positions around? Could you clarify that?
Well, you can approach it either way. I know that Fire loves their, their embedded person, Jordan, I believe her name is. I know that they refer, want her, they actually want her to be part of the Fire family. So if moving a full-time employee from digital government and the appropriate cost with that over there is the way to do it, that'd be great. I assume that it should be more the budget of it, and if they wish to, you know, to bring her in, letting the, the Fire chief have that say over that fund and having that person report directly to that chief. And one of the things I asked about a couple of weeks ago is how are we going to gain trust when we've had so much trust obliterated with a few departments? I think giving them their voice, much the same as the mayor said that the town council would like to have more control over its voice, I think that it's great to make sure they have control over their voice. If they wish to transfer that person and those funds underneath Fire, that's fantastic. That actually answers a couple of questions. It takes care of, of giving police and Fire that trust back, the most trusted organization in the world, the highest rated thing in the world is the Fire Department, that red truck. And if we trust them and empower them and it, by moving that person underneath them with transferring money over and putting it under that control, that's fine with me. I'd love that. I think that, I think that that would do a huge amount to repairing the, the trust and what the public sees is, is, is something that has taken on a unfortunate political agency of its own. So if you were, if we wanted to talk about transferring one or two FTEs to police and one or two to Fire, I think that'd be fantastic also. And just take the accompanying funds for those FTEs with them. That'd be fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to questions about switching money between departments, I agree that that is outside our lane. We can give recommendations about priorities. A priority of this council is communications with our residents and our digital government team is the team that does that for us. And if there are specific things that Councilmember Torgerson is looking at, I think he needs to be very specific when he comes back to ask. It's not our role, it's our town manager's role as to where his people are assigned and how we move forward. How we're communicating with our community is a, is a policy decision at a high level that we can give direction. So I want to be really careful of talking about, we like this employee and we think that employee needs to go somewhere or somewhere else. I don't think that's our role. But I do think that focusing in on all the things that digital government does, which we had a presentation on that, reducing that budget means that we're going to reduce those services. If that's where we're going, then that's a conversation we need to have at, at this level if we're looking at reducing services. So I think we need to be very specific. I think this is a conversation that probably, again, should have happened during the retreat, should have, you know, if we wanted to go down that path, not at the 11th hour, but I look forward to see what comes out of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Tilke. Yes?
The, I, you know, I, although, you know, you'd love to leave it just under, you know, saying it's not our, our lane, I, I completely disagree with you. It's our lane to make sure that we have the best police and Fire, and that's the policy. We are, the most important things that we supply to this, this community are police and Fire. And I feel if we want to just take it back to a dollar figure, I think funding police and Fire is more important than anything. We got police, we got Fire, we got water, we got roads. So to be able to say, I feel that it is more important that we add $200,000 per department, $250,000 per department, that's fine. If, if somebody wants to find it somewhere else, find it somewhere else. But I'd like to, if nothing else, I'd like to see, I'll pull the number, $250,000 more for police and $250,000 more for Fire. How it's divvied up and how it's done, I don't care, but I think it's more important that we put money to police and Fire than anything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Banjivani.
I hear what Councilmember Torgerson is saying and what Councilmember Tilke is saying. If we have any, I just want, I'm looking more for procedure on this. If we had any changes such as what Councilmember Torgerson would like to see, what is the process for that? I don't want to put Kelly on the spot and say, come back with, with answers right now, go look it up, go figure out, get the budget, but I'm not asking that. Is that something we can talk with Patrick about? And then either will we have a, another public meeting or how does that, how does that work?
Patrick, do you want to? This is a new one for me, so Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Banjivani. Yes, I'd be more than happy to have any conversations with any of you about any of the allocations that have been proposed in the budget. Anytime we look at staffing, there is a lot of work and a lot of studies that go into that, so it's not as simple as moving personnel around. There are roles and responsibilities for work that has to get performed, and so that's always the analysis as we build our FT projections and FTE requests. But I'm happy to talk about any of that with you offline.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you for everyone's comments. I just want to state that I've never heard this council not support our police and Fire. I think we have their backs and we would support the budget for what they need. At our last meeting, we actually did approve the budget for over $2 million in overtime for police. And in this meeting, number, item number 11, we approved an increase in the budget for Fire of $750,000. So I think it's important to see that on the page that I believe Councilmember Torgerson is referencing, that the proposed budget for fiscal 2025 is a number, a placeholder. But if you look at the budget for 2024 and the projected actual, that there are some departments like digital government that actually spend less than budgeted, and we, we do approve higher projected spending amounts for departments like police and Fire than what was originally budgeted through our meeting agendas and those contingency requests. So I think that what we're talking about is actually happening. We are supporting those departments where they need it, when they need it. It just simply comes back to council for transparency for those contingency requests. And we are seeing that although we may budget certain amounts for departments, not all of that gets spent in every department. It's, it's a budget and, and those things can move. So, so I would propose that we keep things as staff has proposed them and as we've discussed in previous financial retreats and as others have discussed, that we bring our changes or, or different areas of support to the town manager for review and that we do need a consensus of the council for major items. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaprowski. Councilmember Buckley.
I, I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate as well that I, and I'm sure they know this, I fully support our police and our Fire and, and what they need. And as Councilmember Kaprowski said, you know, we, we did come up with the overage that they had on their budget that they needed, and I, I will support them with whatever they need, as well as I think probably every council member on the dais.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Any other comments or questions for Kelly, since she's still standing at the podium? Poor Kelly. I want to let her sit down. Seeing none. Kelly, thank you very much for the presentation and for answering the questions this evening. We appreciate your time. Any other discussion here in the dais? Councilmember Banjivani.
I'm not sure you answered it or Patrick answered it, but if we do have any kind of change, how would we process with that after we spoke with Patrick? Would it be a, another public meeting or how would we get consensus?
If it's, if it's something that you want to discuss with Patrick and if Patrick needs to bring it back to a few of us to see if we would, actually, no. This is Patrick's lane. Patrick decides how the funds are distributed within the budget in the community. And, you know, when I meet with, when I meet with groups, I explain it like this, the town of Gilbert's a corporation, right? Every corporation has a board of directors. We are the board of directors for the corporation. And every corporation has a CEO. Patrick is the CEO for the town of Gilbert. We set the policy, we set the bottom line. That bottom line is outlined here in the budget. And then Patrick, as our CEO, runs the town every day on that. If we find major discrepancies, we're going to discuss those. If it's a minor thing that you go and have a conversation with Patrick and maybe he decides that that's a good idea, that he thinks it's necessary. But I think Councilmember Kaprowski really outlined the fact that every single person on this dais supports public safety. We have, I have from day one, January of 2015, when I stepped on this dais as a council member, have always supported public safety. And just because there's less new staff in the budget this year for public safety doesn't mean there wasn't an overwhelming amount last year for public safety or the year before that. And...
last year for public safety or the year before that. And sometimes they're needed and sometimes they're not. Sometimes the funding is needed and sometimes it's not for the departments. And we have to base our decision this evening on the work that this staff has done for the past, how many months is it? Seven? September to today, as they're bringing us this preliminary budget. So I say, if you have concerns that you want to discuss with Patrick, every council member is free to do that. Myself too.
Yeah, I wouldn't call them concerns. I just wanted to find out what the process, yeah, find out what the process was. And, you know, you are 100% right. Patrick is CEO of this organization and it's his decisions on where things go, where employees go and such like that. So I just wanted to make sure we knew what the process, the process was. Thanks.
And we, and we run that, the budget and the town on those fiscal policies that have been set by this council. And we've all reviewed. Yes. I don't know who was, Vice Mayor.
I was just going to say, I think it's worth, Patrick did say he's open to meeting with council members to talk about the issues, because there are underlying issues here that may not be coming up right now. And we can talk about those with Patrick and he's offered to do that. And I think it's worth doing that.
Yes. And I, I heard some issues that I think were discussed at a study session last month or two months ago. I've lost track of the days. And communications from this council and how that's done. And I don't think anything has moved forward. So I think those are discussions that need to be had too. But that's off topic from the budget tonight. Trying to stay on topic too. Councilmember Kaprowski, did you want to make a motion? I have one more comment.
Okay.
This budget is always a really important topic each year. And I just want to mention that the, that within the past year, we've had a lot more retreats and meetings and workshops and study sessions with all of council to discuss important topics. And I really appreciate that. Those started back for us in November. And the process was mentioned to us at those times as well, that, that, that those are great times to talk to Patrick is November through January is like the ideal time. And then checking in after that to see how that gets integrated into the budget. I'm sure we had requests that may not have been accommodated, especially with a tight budget this year. But I do appreciate the additional opportunities to discuss certain topics and items as a group. And we were able to provide that direction. So I hope everyone felt like they had that opportunity to talk to staff and Patrick prior to this budget and that we can continue to provide that feedback to Patrick and staff for future budgets. And I, if there's no other discussion, I would be happy to make a motion to accept the preliminary budget, item number 13.
I second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Seven zero preliminary budget. That's two years in a row. We'll see what happens. Okay. At this point, I need to adjourn this special meeting and reconvene our regular meeting, but we're going to take a short recess. So we'll be stepping away for a few minutes. Okay, we'll give a 30-second warning to get started again. I see our council members making their way in. Go ahead and reconvene our regular meeting. Move us to our consent calendar and pass off to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent calendar, we'll only be removing three items. Let me make a motion to approve our consent calendar. Items 14 through, what is it, 31?
21.
31, isn't it?
Wait, you're pulling three off.
But I am going to pull items. So I move approval of those items, 14 through 31, with the exception of item 22, 26, and 29.
So I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, except, all items except for item 26.
22.
22, 26, and 29.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero.
Item 22 is Councilmember Torgerson.
Councilmember Torgerson.
I'm, I'm just, I, sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm just looking, I'm looking for an explanation, you know, the, the increased cost, the change orders on a relatively, what I feel is a relatively new project. But I just want the explanation for myself and for the residents of town, why we're applying these change orders at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember. Who can come to the podium to explain item 22, please? I'm seeing movement, but I can't see who that is. Oh, oh, Susanna.
Oh, Susanna.
I'm like, oh, Susanna. Very funny. Very funny, Susanna.
I try once in a while. Sorry. Thank you. So this, these items that we have before you tonight are, are absolutely change orders. When we're building wells or putting wells into the ground, there are certain steps that have to happen before we can move to the next step. And we can't really do the whole thing as an initial contract. So we start these projects with the first step, move to the next step, move to the next step. And I think this work right here is for the, is for some long lead items. A lot of it is for long lead items for some electrical equipment that would come in. So that's one of the pieces of the puzzle for this.
Ma'am? So what you're saying is it's not, if the change order isn't really necessarily an increase in the cost of the contract, it's a release of funds for something that's coming up in the contract of that, of the building of that well or wells, per se.
It, it is a increase in the current contract amount, but it was an anticipated amount within the budget. But we can't basically set, when we put a contract together, we put the first step and then we add the second step and the third step. So it's adding different amounts of money with different types of scope, depending on what we find with the first step. Hopefully that kind of explains that?
It absolutely does. I just wanted to confirm that it wasn't, oh, it, I just wanted the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. And thank you, Councilmember Torgerson. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I make a motion to accept item 22 as written.
I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Any other comments or questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes.
Item 26, Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is in regards to our capital improvement plan. And if I understand the communication that this, we're accepting the draft today and declaring it a public document. However, I think this is an opportunity to request a change. And so I guess I better And so I guess I better clarify that before I start my long conversation, that this is the correct time to do that.
Mayor, Councilmember Tilke, yes, if there are changes that are requested in the document, then council could give that direction tonight.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. First, I know that this is a long process, and we've had a lot of, um, briefings on this and a lot of conversations, and there's a couple of projects that I just wanted to pull out for consideration. But before I get to them, one of the things I just want to make sure you understand is that I have a strong opinion about the two projects. But I'm truly trying to compromise. That's where I'm coming from, a spirit of compromise on this in regards to the South Gilbert Recreation Center and pool projects. As I mentioned, my preference is to eliminate the projects altogether. But I also understand, especially Councilmember Buckley's passion to represent residents' desires in the area. We've had to make many very difficult decisions these last two years, and it has been challenging to prioritize projects based on urgencies and desires of the community. I want us to ensure that we can appropriately provide the resources needed for all of our current parks and recreation offerings and priorities, which makes it hard for me to support a new service line in the midst of shrinking budgets, escalating costs, and limited resources. So here's my thoughts, again, in the spirit of compromise, is where I'm coming from. The South Recreation Center, based on our previous discussions, I appreciate this project being pushed out to allow for higher priority items to be funded in the reduced scope of work. There is no funding for the next five years, which will allow us to focus on finishing out the South Regional Park to its full potential of almost 300 acres of recreation for our community, along with other upgrades to both North and South Gilbert Trails. So I'm recommending, because I've changed this since I've had a conversation with staff, so I hope that I'm, I've got it right now, because it was just this afternoon. The, uh, just so you know, they have reduced the total project from 70 million to 37 million, which I appreciate. So the scope has, has been reduced and to be funded in '29, and so I'm supportive of that. And then on the South Pool, Gilbert's historic involvement in pools is through its relationship with the schools, which significantly limits our liability and resources needed to maintain and staff the pool offerings. Building our own pool or aquatic center is very expensive, not to mention the ongoing cost to maintain and staff it year-round. I support exploring private and other public partnerships to accommodate the desire of South Gilbert residents without the full responsibility of owning our own facility. I recommend the South Gilbert Pool be reduced from 61 million to 30 million with the intention of a private or a public partnership discussion and keeping this funding in the six-to-10-years column. So, um, one thing I want everybody to keep in mind is we look at these projects every year. And so the next council gets to look at this project, and if they think it needs to be moved up or it needs to have a bigger scope of work, they're able to do that every single year. I just feel like, um, in such a tight budget year escalating costs, the priorities that we spent so much time moving those forward, that I would just like to see these projects reduced and pushed out, but not eliminated. And that's my spirit of compromise. So, uh, so anyway, that's where I am on that. And, um, I won't make a motion to accept it until you guys are ready.
In the spirit of compromise, Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Councilmember Tilke, that's, um, that's just good business. It isn't compromise. It's good business. And being a businessman myself, I'm all about public-private partnerships to reduce the price and the cost for taxpayers. And, you know, if, if a company wants to come by in five, six, seven years, whatever, and make a public-private pool, club, whatever, I'm all for that. So thanks for being able to take a look at that and potentially carving out a couple, tens of millions of dollars.
Councilmember Buckley.
I, I agree with Chuck. That's just good business. Compromise is always good. I, I, my intentions were, were never, I mean, my thoughts were never that, that South Gilbert would get, you know, an aquatic center or rec center next year at all. It is, you know, it was just to put it on, you know, put it on the budget so that we can discuss that, like you said, in five years or six years or whatever. But, um, in your spirit of compromise, I like that, and I agree with that. You know, just so long as we don't get rid of it and we can continue to, to advocate for services in that area, because the residents there deserve those services. And, but we also know that progress is not quick. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Councilmember Tilke, I just have a clarification question on your comments. Does, do those revisions have an overall reduction in the CIP budget? Or are those funds shifted to other, like a contingency or other projects?
The, um, if I understand correctly, the Recreation Center had already been changed, so that was already reduced. This would be reducing the, um, aquatic center, so that would come out of the total amount, 61 million, down to 30. So 31 million.
Okay.
Out of the long-term CIP. Again, we, what we're really focused in on is what we're going to be spending this next year. But I think, um, we also have to look long-term at some of these projects.
And those changes are separate from our budget because it's outside of that five-year window that is adopted in our budget. Thank you.
Okay, and, and still staying there, correct? Okay.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
I like the idea of moving it out further because that gives us an opportunity to monitor the progress for cactus surf, for expansion of the regional park and Desert Sky, so we can measure that performance and see if we're meeting the needs of those people in that area versus just going out and building something now and not knowing whether the need is really there.
So my comment was similar to Councilmember Tilke's, which is, I, I was not opposed to having a recreation center in South Gilbert. I think that North Gilbert has had a rec center for quite some time, and South Gilbert is prime for having a recreation center. My concern was the aquatic center. When you call it an aquatic center, that is a big-ticket item that needs long-term funding, staffing, so many different things and needs. But I'm willing to leave it in there for compromise. But I also want, considered in the future, a pool added to North Gilbert near the recreation center that was cut from the recreation center. Now, this plan is from 2025 out to 2034, so it's a long-term plan. And as Councilmember Tilke mentioned, the council talks about this every year. And this capital improvement plan is rolling and moving and adjusting all the time as we move forward. As a community, things change. But that's the same comment that I meant, that I said at the retreat earlier. So I'm throwing that back out there.
Mayor, I, I just want to point out that in review of this document, there is a Free Stone Rec Center pool.
Good. Thank you. I missed that. But since you brought it up, I had to.
I didn't see that. Oh, sorry. I kept it on the whole time. Sorry.
It was okay. I knew it was on, but I...
And there's actually a, a Free Stone Rec Center splash pad as well, which I'd love to see accelerated, but it's in there.
I would love to see a splash pad accelerated too, Councilmember, because those are very popular. Oh, pickleball. Pickleball. I did a grand opening for an indoor pickleball last week. Total different topic. Okay, any other comments on this topic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I, I have, I have no issues with North Gilbert getting a pool. I think South Gilbert should get a pool first because they have no pool. And, yeah, and I'm good. I'm good with that compromise, and, or we can do them together. We can do twin pools.
One of us will be here by then.
Oh, well, I know that. Yeah, I, well, maybe, maybe not. You never know. So...
Mayor.
Kelly.
Could I ask a clarification on the desire change? Is the desire change on the pool to go from 60 million to 30 million have a smaller project? Or to change the funding source to be public-private partnership for half the project, but the whole project would still exist?
Reduce the cost for private partnership.
Public.
Reduce, so switch the funding source on half of it to be, okay, so the total number you'll see will be the same, but the funding source?
30, 30 million will be the total fund.
For the, for the town's portion?
Yes. Oh, I, I, well, yes.
Because if we get money from somebody else, like a public-private partnership, it would assume they would give us the money, but it would show the full amount of the project. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. But I, I'd like to keep it where it is so that conversation continues because, um, yeah. I, I know what you're saying, but I don't want it funded at fully. I don't want the full...
So I think Kelly's trying to figure out if she's looking at a $60 million budget that's 30 million by the town and 30 million by an outside entity, or are we looking at 30 million total with the town providing a portion of that with a public-private partnership providing the rest of it?
The way to capture...
60 million dollars for a pool.
60 million dollars for, and there's a difference between, in my opinion, and I'm not a parks person, just play one on TV. There's a difference to me between adding a pool to a recreation center and building an aquatic facility. An aquatic facility is, in my mind, a whole different ballgame, right? I think.
Slides, lazy rivers.
The whole nine yards, right? Yes. So it depends on what the expectation is.
I just want to make sure we capture it correctly.
My intention is 30 million.
Total?
Total.
Okay. Finding other funding sources if possible.
Thank you.
It can be changed in the future.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I like, I mean, I think we should go further and, you know, look for a dog park, you know, sponsored by Kibbles &amp; Bits. I mean, if we can save some money, let's do it. That's a dollar. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Kelly at this point? Thanks, Kelly. We appreciate you. Anyone like to make a motion on that item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Um, and again, I wasn't able to pull up my computer. I could now, but I didn't have time. So I make a motion to accept the draft CIP FY, FY 2025 to 2034 with the following changes. That the Gilbert, South Gilbert Recreation Center, um, will be reduced in project scope and to be funded in FY '29 for the amount that's currently in there. And that South Gilbert Pool will be reduced from 61 million to 30 million with the intention of a private and public partnership discussion, keeping this funding noted in the six-to-10-years column.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second by, I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is Councilmember Tilke, is Councilmember Torgerson still with us?
Yeah, I'm a nay.
Oh, thank you. All opposed, say nay. Nay, we already cut that one. So motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Torgerson, I didn't mean to forget you or bypass you. Number 29, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Tilke, I don't, no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Torgerson.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't find any explanation of 25, 29 in my packet, so I would like an explanation of what 29 is.
It's so dark over in that corner. Oh, it's Nathan. Nathan Williams, coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Anderson, members of council. Uh, Councilmember Torgerson, item 29 is our somewhat regular, it's around about a three-year trajectory here of personnel policy updates, most of which, this go-around are, um, you know, wording changes, shortening of certain terms, and removal of certain redundancies with a couple specific asks in the personnel policies.
Can you please explain what the asks are and what, what the actual change of, uh, let's, let's call it the clarifying language, what it's actually going to mean?
Mayor Peterson, Councilmember Torgerson, the, the two asks that have a financial impact. One is 40-hour fire personnel being granted one additional floating holiday. For some reason, they, we assume it's a, it's a policy that dates back quite some time ago. They were offered one floating holiday in a, in their, in their capacity, and they are the only 40-hour personnel in the town that has only granted one. So there's the addition of one floating holiday a year for those roles. And then the other, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on my other item. Oh, that actually may be the only financial impact item. And then outside of that, again, it was a lot of removal, there were a lot of redundant terms, and there were a lot of terms that predate the current personnel policy. So we had terms in there like key staff, things like that, that, that are no longer used in our language and were just simply removed and updated. Outside of that, there's, let's see, trying to see what's not just a word change or a word update or a clarifying language. The only other item, there is a, there's an addition of language that gives town manager the option to allow, on a case-by-case, rare basis, based on critical operation needs, vacation carry-forward adjustments. And, and this really has to do with, this would be in extreme situations where, um, you know, say, a workforce, say our police department is forced to be, um, on patrol, picking up overtime shifts and toward the end of the fiscal year, and as a result, they're unable to take vacation time, and their carry-forwards would be affected, or they're, they would lose vacation. The town manager would have some authorization to make exceptions to that policy. But again, it would be on a case-by-case, not a blanket town-wide adjustment or approval. I think everything else, council member, is, again, is, is really just updates to, to language and, and wording, trying to clarify some things that, that can be a little bit misleading or easily misunderstood by our employees based on language that's not typically used anymore.
Yeah, since it, for whatever reason, wasn't in my printed package. But what we're saying is that, uh, fire will get an extra floating holiday that, that for some reason wasn't there previously, and that the town manager may extend, uh, carry-forward on vacations. No policy changes, no, we're going to comply to some policy that, that, that council's unaware of, correct?
Mayor, council member, no, not at all. It's, it's, and I apologize, I'm, I'm not sure why it's not reflected in your packet, but, um, no other, no other significant changes, no additions, no removals of any, you know, access or, or privileges or anything of that sort. And just to clarify, the floating holiday piece, again, it is for 40-hour fire. That, that is, for some reason, the one group that was not being allowed the two floating holidays a year like everyone else in the organization. And so it's just a matter of, of clarifying and, and giving them the same holiday accrual option as everyone else.
I appreciate the explanation, sir. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
We have an outline of the changes in our packet. It's not like the whole document with every single change outlined, but we have an outline of the changes in our packet.
We do have the red line document, but it's after the full document.
I didn't even see that one.
It's kind of in the wrong order, but the, the red line document is there.
I went through the outlines of... We've all been taking so much time this past year especially. I think, Chris, we started well over a year ago with updating all of our policies and trying to get everything caught up to where we are today and making everything easier, easier to use, if you will, I think inconsistent.
Considering we had to read three thousand, three hundred pages this week for this meeting, sometimes like you can get confused.
Sometimes you miss things, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Last time I missed the whole outline of the community engagement task force, I stopped at the two items before it and was done. And I was like, okay, you're right, there's over three thousand pages. So. Councilmember Torgerson, and with the extension of the, of the town manager being able to extend that option when needed for vacation pay, it really, it, it became a hot topic during the pandemic, especially when our, our employees couldn't take their, their vacation time. And so this way, it's not extended to every single employee, but only on a very as-needed basis at Patrick's discretion. And I'm comfortable with that. I had had a conversation with him about that. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
I move to accept.
Please move to accept. Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Tilke. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now, moving on to administrative items. One administrative item for council discussion and action. Council, consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the third quarter of FY twenty twenty-four. Does anyone need a presentation on this item? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to approve this, accept the budget report and contingency report?
Move approval.
A motion by Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilmember Buckley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to communications from citizens, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The Gilbert Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them, and at the conclusion of the open call to the public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to these sessions, we must remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking for the allotted time. First up tonight will be Don Edwards, and he has had time donated to him by Crystal. Don.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and esteemed council members. My name's Don Edwards. I recently retired as a captain from your fire department. Tonight, in my ongoing effort to shed light on the people currently in charge of the fire department, I would like to talk about an issue that's currently going on. The Gilbert Fire Department, much like high school, is ruled by cliques. The one with the most sway currently is the Training Cadre. Yeah, they gave themselves a nickname. These are the men and women who believe that, according to Battalion Chief Barton, quote, "Training is the mission of the fire department, not service delivery." As I've stated before, and it was one of the factors that led me to falling out of favor, I believe service delivery is the actual mission of the fire department. You should know that currently ninety percent of the chief officers in the fire department have worked in the Training Division. It's pretty much an undocumented prerequisite for promotion. The current issue involving the cadre is not just unethical, it might be illegal. Since I was hammered for not following the letter of policy, you should know that we have a policy that addresses off-duty employment. A couple of the highlights of that policy are that you have to get written permission from the fire chief, that your side job can't conflict with the fire department, and that job can't shed a bedlight, a bad light on the fire department. As you guys might be aware of, the fire department recently needed to purchase a whole bunch of new hose. As you know, there's also a defined process for doing so. Currently, there are, I believe, three members of the cadre that are under investigation for not following that process. Here's what you should be asking yourselves. Did these guys just not follow policy? Or did they have the tacit approval of the chiefs that are also cadre members? Did one member in particular shop for the answer he wanted after he was told no? So what did they actually do? Well, allegedly, they took an on-duty fire truck, engine two-five-two, went down to the training academy, and decided to run some drills. That in and of itself is not bad. The problem is, they decided to film those drills and then use them for a commercial. Not for the fire department, not for the town of Gilbert, but for their off-duty employer. That's not great, but I guess you could explain it. Unfortunately, that employer just so happened to get the contract to provide the new hose for the town, and I think that was around two hundred fifty thousand dollars. There's some questions that come to mind. Were these guys just emboldened by the fact that since they were part of the cadre, they could do what they wanted to do? Did the, did the fact that for anyone to use the Training Academy, a member of the cadre, sorry, the Training Division, had to be allowed, had to be down there, which allowed them to fly under the radar? By the way, that fact that one of them always has to be present, it explains why you have a BLS engineer who's making close to two hundred thousand dollars. I know when I was a captain, I had to prove my guys' time cards. Was nobody watching what was going on down there? Why are the chiefs that were running the Training Division, why don't they have to answer for this? Rumor has it that that same engineer was trying to recruit a certain captain to come down to the Training Division. He supposedly promised that captain that he would make, quote, "up to two hundred thousand dollars with all the overtime I could give you." I also, we also heard tonight that Chief Duggan came to ask for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contingency funds to cover a shortfall in the overtime budget. The citizens should know that the majority of that is to cover training costs, not to keep fire trucks on the road. In the Gilbert Fire Department, three-person fire trucks and putting trucks out of service due to manpower is the norm. These guys deserve better. You should know, this whole thing is part of why I went to file a complaint. I was never contacted by HR in contra, contrary to what policy says, so I'm now forced to air this in public. My career was always more than just a job to me. I truly felt like it was a calling. And I was never in a position to have my integrity questioned the way these guys' integrity is being questioned now. This situation is the natural outgrowth of having people in positions of power that only look at things in the light of, what can I do for my own personal benefit? Thank you, and I again urge you to talk to the men and women who are still working under these guys. And if you do, I wouldn't be surprised if you heard a group of men and women that can say and do what they please because they are, are part of the in-group. Something I heard on my way in today, that same two hundred thousand dollar engineer also somehow was able to trade equipment with a neighboring fire department, Queen Creek, had them buy new equipment. So that's something I'm going to keep my eye out for, and hopefully, when I'm back in two weeks, I'll have some more to talk about that. Made it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up is Bridget Vega, who has received donated time from Lisa Alger.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chief, and Banger. You don't get to look the other way on this issue. Gilbert has a gang problem. We need you as leadership to step up, to be proactive versus reactive. The community has stood up while you sat down. Thank you to the Lord family and Connor Jarnigan for being a beacon of hope and your strength throughout the process of both city ordinances. As we continue to demand accountability and transparency, according to Arizona Revised Statute thirty-nine dash one twenty-seven, a victim of a criminal offense related to the recording of victim's attorney, on behalf of the victim or the immediate family of the victim, they have a right to obtain public records requests and a copy of law enforcement video for free. With that being said, we demand that Gilbert releases the records of Rick Keener's son to the family or to the attorney, as he has been waiting since August of last year, and Connor Jarnigan records, as it has been four months since the most recent request that Gilbert is withholding the records and trying to charge the victim's families a fee. In order to get to the root cause of teen violence, we must address the elephant in the room. As previously stated, six months ago, where is the youth getting the drugs and the guns? What is the plan for the summer, especially as the goons have been released? And there is so many more who are causing further vandalism and harm to the community that we have yet to be arrested and held accountable. Now that the Gilbert goons is classified as a gang, we demand that Chief Solberg to recuse himself from the investigations and allow the gang unit and the human trafficking unit experts to take over. We are seeing skyrocketing numbers in suicide, teen violence, drug use, sex trafficking, sex extortion across the East Valley. Human trafficking is happening now in Arizona schools and within our backyards. The average age victims are lured into sex trafficking is eleven to fourteen years old, and it's a hundred and fifty billion-dollar industry. Personally, we have spent the last four months at the garages downtown Gilbert. It wasn't until the community complained and called non-emergency multiple times, and an Internal Affairs investigation was opened just a couple of weeks ago. Then you guys started taking it a little bit more serious. Thank you to the officers who are actually IDing people, but until people are cited and charged for continuously loitering, drugs, underage drinking, we won't see any change. In the result of the lack of your action, a nineteen-year-old died and fell off the top of the garage last night. Let me repeat that. In the result of the lack of your action, a nineteen-year-old fell from the top of the garage last night. And we've had this conversation with multiple officers and said, when are you guys going to do something? Are you going to wait till somebody else dies? We also brought up the fact of Preston Lord's case. We're sick of teen violence being brought to zip codes. Teen violence is not a zip code issue. The officers have stated, and there is on the body cams, of them stating the fact that there's been multiple kids on the ledge, and they're surprised that they hadn't seen more deaths. So that's actually concerning, seeing that come out of your officer's mouth. But I'm glad that you guys are finally doing something, but still, again, a teen died last night. We demand an immediate upgrade to all of the cameras in the garages. We ask that all of you take your council hats off and take a break from your paid engagement. Take a walk up to the top of the garages. We have no future if we don't protect the, protect the children. We have a duty to protect, and Gilbert, you have blood on your hands. We demand an external investigation. It's never, it should never be profit over people. Rise up, do something, Gilbert.
Thank you. Carissa Arnold?
Thank you. I also want to address the parking garage issue because I have to say, it has been incredibly frustrating to see the things that we've seen. I recently sat and talked with my, one of my adult children who told me that they had hung out in the garages. And had I known these things were going on back when they were hanging out in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, it would have been a much different story, and I would not have allowed my kids to go. They confirmed with me that they also had been seeing spotters going in and out, but were not aware of the activity and what the spotters were doing. The fact that my own child can tell me that spotters were in there a few years ago, this has been going on for a long time and should have been rectified a long time ago. Kids are drinking underage up there. We've sat and watched drugs get rolled right in front of our eyes, and this is all within the last few weeks. You have cars going in and out. They go back and forth. They are trying to avoid the officers as much as they can. Your own officers have to be bored out of their minds as they are sitting there babysitting kids. What needs to happen is that you guys need to put paid parking in there, and if needs to be, then get it validated with the business when they are going in and, going in and, uh, sorry, I can't think of the word. But anyways, you know what I'm saying. So all of that being said, nothing is going to change in those garages, and we are wasting our city's money by having our officers sit up there. On top of that, school has just got out. Our school is in the process of getting out. And I just want to say, just three hours before this young man died, I was in the garage, and here is what I was hearing in the garage. Now, I don't know if you could hear that, but that car that was squealing out was two floors above me, and my windows were rolled down on my car. That's how loud it was. The kids up there don't care. You don't have enough staff to sit and monitor the garage every single minute of the day. Because of school being out, it's going to become an increasing problem, not just on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So please get paid parking in this garage.
Thank you. Bhagavan Chintala?
Namaste, everyone. My name is Bhagavan Chintala. I'm HSS, Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh. And I'm here to speak about the Guru Vandana Teacher Appreciation Program we celebrated in recent days. So Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh of Arizona wishes all our teachers, all our teachers on the account of Teachers Appreciation Week. The society is indebted to the teachers because of their role and selfless service to make and model our future citizens of this country. So we express our heartfelt gratitude to all our teachers for their divine services. So in, in Hindu society, back in India, we celebrate Guru Vandana, which is Teacher Appreciation Day, as a day, you know, where we pay our respects and gratitude to the teachers. So following the same path, in Arizona, Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh celebrated Guru Vandana, which is a Teacher Appreciation Day, for five event, I, as five events. We have over four hundred guests attended the programs, five events, and we had eight, eighty teachers from different community and different religions attended the event, and we celebrated the Guru Vandana program. So we are all here because of our teachers, and I'm here to, I'm speaking because of my teacher. So we want to pay our respect to all our teachers. That is what, and we are following as a, as a Hindu Swam Sevak Sangh. Thanvad to all of you, and my, you know, Vandanas to the teachers who made you and modeled you to sit here. And my respects and Vandanas to the, all the citizens who made, to the teachers who made and, you know, modeled them to sit here. Thanvad. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stacy Lavelle?
Hi, my name is Stacy Lavelle. I just wanted to express a concern. Mayor, you mentioned earlier that the town in Gilbert's a corporation, which it is. So Patrick's like a CEO. You guys are the board of directors, which makes us the citizens, the shareholders. So as a shareholder, and I'm probably speaking on, on behalf of a lot of shareholders here, curious why the communication from citizens or shareholders is put last instead of where it was at first. Do you have an answer to that? No, I guess not. My guess is, it's probably all the dirty laundry about the town that's coming out that you guys don't want shared. You're probably thinking, well, we'll do this late at night so people won't show up. Not working. Sorry. Think it's very concerning that you're doing that, and I probably speak from. I think it's very concerning that you're doing that, and I probably speak from a lot of us that what you're doing is wrong, and you should be ashamed, all of you. Thank you.
Please. Dan Reynolds?
Good evening. My name's Dan Reynolds. Been a resident here for a very long time. Also a retired employee here. Not disgruntled, as some people have previously stated. So I want to talk a little bit tonight about a presentation that Mr. Baner gave you folks, and I think it was on April 2nd. It was a special session, had to do with our OGD Department. For those of you who have not seen this yet, it basically gives information on this department and how the information on this department compares to other cities, towns in the valley, and in other states. Talks about how the town of Gilbert basically stacks up against other entities as it relates to the number of employees in that particular department, the number of engagements, the ODG budget, and that type of information. It also gave information on the population, which I think was 288,000. Talked about the age of our citizens, which is very young. Median age is 35 years old. I think he said a third of our population is under the ages of 18. Much of the information given was very positive. So much so that it makes me want to dig into these numbers and compare apples to apples. It almost seemed like an audition for another award. It was so positive. So I have some questions, and I have some concerns about this presentation. First question is, who put it together? Where did they get the information? I'm guessing it came from the Office of Digital Government. That'd be my guess. Last time they gave us some information, it was because of a newspaper article that talked about how the IODG was spying on its employees. And that it was just a group of disgruntled employees. But the FOIA showed the information, and it proved that they were spying and monitoring, and we shared that with you guys. I'm talking about the town of Gilbert employees they were spying on. So my confidence is on this information is a little bit suspect. Next question. How many of the engagements and the hits and clicks are actually positive or real? And where were they get, where were they going towards? Which department? Has anybody done any research on this? I think the mayor and the council has an obligation to check into this information and find out the legitimacy of it. I think it's important. Councilman Torgeson, who's not here tonight, had some concerns. Seems like he asked a lot of questions to Mr. Baner, appeared as though his intuition was telling him something that didn't seem right. I think he was correct on his intuition. Some of the council members asked some fair questions. Some of you guys were very happy with the presentation and the information. So the last thing I want to talk about is this. I'll be quick. With all the problems we have with this teen violence in this town, does anyone see a problem or a connection to social media and teen violence? Remember, our members here and our citizens are very young, as we stated. So there's plenty of information out there connecting social media and its use by our younger population. We've had some discussion about it tonight. Anxiety, anger, depression, suicide, just to name a few. So I think before we get too enamored with all this completely positive information, I think it's probably a good idea to take a closer look into this presentation, and I would ask you to do that. Thank you for your time. Remember, let the conscience be your guide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Laval?
All right. Good evening. Let's get right to it. Pierce Coleman Report. Let's see, it's the conclusion section. You guys can look it up. They came up with conclusion. This is the law firm that wrote that stuff. Says town officials speaking on behalf of the town did not promote the political Marxist agenda of BLM. Point number two says town officials speaking on behalf of the town did not, nor did they actively promote or engage in publicly supporting the BLM political or social agenda while using taxpayer funds. I believe your police chief took a knee when he was in uniform, along with a couple of other police officers, supporting a BLM event. I do believe your former ODG director posted a bunch of stuff on the social media sites within the town. As a matter of fact, I believe the Instagram account still has a blacked-out police page and a blacked-out fire page, blacked out in support of BLM, still to this day. But this report says, no, he didn't do that. So I wore this shirt today. It says mostly peaceful. Reminds me of the CNN reporter during the BLM riots with the building burning behind him, and he's on reporting, and he's saying it's mostly peaceful. Like, we're going to believe that? Kind of like we're going to believe this report? It's kind of like a mostly peaceful report. The third part on this one is, uh, the chief digital officer Dana Birchman did not use the town of Gilbert equipment, resources, or funds to express her personal political views and agenda by using the town of Gilbert's governmental social networking to support a particular political platform, which includes that of the Marxist and BLM organization. If that's the case, why did she resign? I heard she was crying when she left your office, Patrick. If that's the case, why did she, why did she walk away from this job? So let's move on to the DEI portion of this, since it's tied to BLM. Your, your police, or your fire chief here wants $98 million. He wants to redo Station 11 at Riggs Road. By the way, they do need a new gym there, but they don't need individual bathrooms. And he also wants to propose this for stations 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 8. All of these stations, 11 included, were built 2002 or later. They're all, what, less than 25 years old, and he wants to put individual bathrooms in all these stations. You ask him why? He has one transgender member. He refuses to hold accountable. He refuses to hold him equally responsible to the same level of every other employee. So does your HR manager. And they're going to build individual bathrooms because they let this man use a woman's bathroom. And he also does it in uniform in public. Okay? I have a wife, I have a daughter, and I respect women. They have a right to have their privacy in public when they need to go use a restroom. Okay? We're not supporting that within our organization. How about the women in the fire department? Are they getting that right? Are they getting that protection? I don't think they are. I think you have a lot of internal problems, and it starts with your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the communications.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any one want to make comment? Seeing none. Speakers continue to utilize the one-way citizen comment section of the town council meetings to share their opinions regarding the Office of Digital Government and town leadership, continuing to highlight claims that were thoroughly investigated internally than externally by a third-party investigator who found the accusations had no merit. I'm concerned with the potential damage done to Gilbert's name heart and town organization by these continued efforts of a few to highlight allegations, opinions, and false claims. The spoken word has the capacity to inflict damage. This community is facing pressing issues. I respect and welcome any and all efforts and energies that work to bringing us together as a community, not those that divide us. Any that moves us forward in a positive manner, any that honor the town's small-town roots we all know and love, those neighborly attitudes that were the very reason many of us moved to Gilbert. I challenge us to be better humans to each other. Thank you. To the next item on our agenda, future meetings. Council may discuss whether to place an item on our future agenda, but may not discuss the merit of them. Anything that council would like to add? Next communications from the town manager. Slides from the town manager.
Yes.
Fanciness.
So we just started. Get advanced to the next slide. Just one thing tonight I wanted to highlight. We had our first-ever Gilbert community bike ride. It was held on May 18th, and the event included booths focused on bike safety and maintenance. The route started and ended in downtown Gilbert and was led by Councilmember Kaprowski. I want to thank our teams in Parks and Recreation, Gilbert PD, Economic Development, Development Services, and Digital Government for making the event a huge success. And I'm sure Councilmember Kaprowski will talk more about it in her update. That's all tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
That's all, Patrick? Thank you. Next report from council. Councilmember Tilki was first.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to give a special thank you to Mr. James Davenport and Nikki McCarty, whose dad is in the final stages of ALS, for bringing to our attention that May 2024 is ALS Awareness Month. While we didn't receive the request in time to be added to tonight's agenda, a proclamation will be provided to Mr. Davenport separately. ALS, often referred to as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive fatal neuromuscular disorder that occurs when motor nerve cells cease to function and die, often leading to total paralysis and death within five years of diagnosis. There is no cure. You may not be aware that multiple research studies indicate that people who have served in the military are twice as likely to develop ALS and die from the disease than those with no history of military service. And I just wanted to tell Nikki that our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Banji Vani?
Parks and Rec report, summer registration is now open and available online. We're offering over 600 programs this season for adults and children to play, learn, and explore. They include fitness, dance, cheer, and gymnastics, sports, programs for those with special needs, cooking and baking, computers and robotics, summer camps, life skills, and so much more. Free, Freestone Splash Pad. Looking for something fun to do around town this summer? Pick up, pick up at, pick up a free, a Freestone Splash Pass where you live. You'll have free access to the Freestone Recreation Center, along with access to public swim at any of our four Gilbert Aquatic Centers. What a deal. Contact Freestone Recreation Center for more information. And let's not forget to beat the heat at Gilbert's H2O Fest. Join us Thursday, June 2nd, or June 6th for a family-friendly water fest at Freestone Park. The event will feature playful water obstacles, food trucks, music, and more. Three sessions will be held to ensure optimal slide time for each participant, and tickets are on sale now. Thanks, Rocky.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
I'm going to build off of your announcement, Councilor Banji Vani, because I went to the H2O Fest last year with my family, and it was a lot of fun. The slide they're talking about is essentially a, um, a slip-and-slide down the hills at Freestone Park, and because they limit the attendance, there's, um, it's just great for the kids to play on all the equipment, so I did definitely highlight that. Freestone Rec Center also got new gym equipment, and they are having a sale right now on all their memberships through May 24th. We were able to stop at Freestone Rec Center on the community bike ride that happened on Saturday. So thanks, Patrick, for highlighting that, and I hadn't even seen the pictures yet, so that was super, super fun to see. Was able to go with my family and the Straza family, Alexandria Straza, who was the, the, she's eight years old now, but she was seven years old in January when she was hit on her bicycle. She was able to join as well, although she didn't have her new bike, so she joined in a, like, golf cart that was holding all the water for everybody. So it was a really nice event. It brought the community together. Everyone expressed their love for our trails. We saw a ton of people using our trail system. Really want to thank Parks and Recreation and the Police Department for facilitating that event. Unfortunately, there was some tragic news in the past week that there were two bike-related crashes last week that resulted in serious injuries. So it just brought more awareness to the fact that this is a pressing issue in our community, and to bring awareness and education and encouragement to our youth and adults to wear bike helmets and be those good role models and protect themselves is really important. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, then I'll do report from the mayor. So I have a few things to report. First, on Monday, May 27th, please join us here at Town Hall for the Memorial Day Celebration from 8:30 to 9:30. This free event includes a flag and wreath ceremony, battlefield cross, POW/MIA table, live music, and guest speaker. Guests are encouraged to bring their own blanket or lawn chair for seating, and the Gilbert Historical Museum will be open for free, following the event from 9:30 until noon. Visit hdsouth.org for more information. Up on the screen, you'll see a slide about Heat Relief Network. We've heard over and over this past spring that we had the most heat-related deaths in Arizona last year, and we really want to make sure that we're not part of that here again, or that we don't hear the same news again repeated for 2024. The Heat Relief Network is collecting for this program, and as you can see, there's lots of items that are needed and lots of places in Gilbert that you can donate, and the QR code there is on the screen for anyone that would like to scan that for more information. Thank you to Melanie Dykstra and her department for featuring that. Do you know a high school-age teen in Gilbert that's interested in learning about local government and leadership while volunteering in our community? Well, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is the perfect fit for them. Application for the 2024-25 MYAC is open until 11:59 PM on June 30th, 2024. Visit gilbertaz.gov/MYAC, M-Y-A-C, for more information. It was mentioned earlier, but this week is the last week of school for our students here in Gilbert. All three of our school districts will be getting out between today, tomorrow, and maybe just today and tomorrow. So please be aware of all the students that'll be out running, running around, and everybody have a safe and fun summer break, and congratulations. So the 2024 graduates graduating from the seven district high schools and all the other charter and private schools that we have here in the town of Gilbert. I wanted to say that we had a great visit with a small delegation from our sister city from Northern Ireland last week and from Newton Abbey. Thank you to Patrick and the staff for the meetings and presentations and for sharing best practices with our friends. Also, a big thank you to the Gilbert Sister Cities Board for the events, et cetera, that they held. Big shout out to Chief Rob Duggan for cooking a lot of burgers and hot dogs on that great grill owned by the fire department. And then a very huge thank you, and I don't think she's here tonight, to Alina Bay with the manager's office for, well, everything, because I couldn't even start to list everything that Alina did to get ready for that visit last week, and then to make sure that it went off without a hitch. So very big thank you for that. And one last thank you to Amy, sitting right there at the clerk's table. This is Amy's last night with us in the clerk's department, but she's moving to the CIP team. So we won't be seeing her here at council meetings in this capacity, but sometime in the future, I expect to see you at a podium making a presentation, Amy. So congratulations. Thanks for choosing to move up within the town and, and the jobs here that we have available for our employees. We really appreciate that, and thanks for all you've done in the clerk's office, and best of luck to you. That's all I have. Thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn. Is that how I'm supposed to do it now?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? We are adjourned.